Let's start with the pledge. I went to get the light because somebody so graciously didn't write it. It was here, but let me go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll probably get up because I always stand whenever I'm doing it because I'm supposed to be here in the classroom. I forget what I'm doing. Welcome to our meeting. I'm going to acknowledge that we have those public meeting notices on three different tables. We have a pile of agendas over there. And Mr. Hendrix piled some med jar home reports there that everybody wants to pick them up. You can call the roll call at this time. Pam Berensen.
Here.
And Larry Pye.
Here.
And Mayor Lawhead is here. We have some unfinished business from the last time.
Mayor, I'd just like to point out that the roll call vote did not establish a quorum in conducting a business.
Thank you. The unfinished business that we have is a discussion of a legal quorum and the effect on city procedures and actions that that's going to cause. Now, it's very obvious that Mr. Ben Hendrix and I disagree, and what do I know? But if you had picked up one of the packets, I didn't look closely, but it looked to me like it was the same packet we got this year. Is that correct?
No, it is a different packet.
Okay. Oh, I just think you gave us one. Okay. We have the Attorney General's letter. That's the same as the last, or did you get another?
No, that is the same Attorney General's letter, although I don't believe we had that letter at the last meeting.
Yeah, we did. It's here. Well, I have it.
We did not contact the Attorney General's office regarding that matter until after the meeting last month.
Well, I have it, so I'm sorry about that. So we have one from Leslie Donnelly, Assistant Attorney General, who cited a case in Ford as her case that she looked at, and it appears to be the only case that there is. Also said that right up front, we don't have jurisdiction and this is not a legal opinion. Baird Home issued a statement that was in our package, but wasn't forwarded. Which says, the question, will the city council with two acting members constitute a quorum? Very clear of the question. For the purpose of conducting official city business. Secondly, may the city council make appointments to fill vacancies on the city council? We already knew that, so I don't know why they were asked to address that because we had already been notified by the county attorney or the county clerk that the Secretary of State would in fact call an election and that she would be asked to do that election. And she had the choice of whether she did it by mail or did voting for the things. We already knew that before the meeting. And number three, if the new council is unable to legally conduct official business, how should the city pay its claims? And those are the three questions that I assume Mr. Hendrix posed to Baird Home. Baird Home is an attorney of law that is in Omaha. We first contacted him, used him when he was contacted by the Hendrix to come in and help us with the Sharon Street problem. So their answer is Nebraska courts have not specifically addressed what constitutes a quorum during periods of vacancies. Section 17105 of Nebraska Revised Statute, and by the way, that's the one that I quoted in my December meeting, specifically states, "A majority of all members elected to the city council shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of any business." As highlighted, and they have highlighted that, by the bold text, a plain reading of the statute infers that a quorum relates to the number of elected members rather than the body as a whole or the number of seats on the council. Under this interpretation, the vacancies left by Councilman Allen and Councilman Lawhead result in a city council with two elected members. And the presence of the two council members constitutes a quorum. That is, two is a majority of two. They are the elected ones. There are no other elected ones here. There are no, you don't count all the empty seats. Section 17103 provides that, "The city council, the city of the second class, shall consist of not less than four nor more than twelve who are registered voters. A requirement of the city council must consist of at least four elected members." Could conflict with the above interpretation. However, section 103 appears to relate to the general makeup of the city council. That is, establishment of the number of seats on the city council by ordinance. While section 17105 appears to support that the presence of both elected council members constitutes a quorum and the council with only two elected members may conduct business, Nebraska courts have not specifically addressed the issue. There is no case study, in other words, basically. As such, there's no precedence other than the language of the statute the council can rely upon if it chooses to operate as a two-person council pending elections of the vacancies. Further, the state agencies that regulate the city's actions may have a different interpretation in section 17105, and as such, the city may wish to follow the suggestion of the State Auditor's Office, which is discussed below. Is that the exact? Okay, so we go on. Section 32560, "Vacancies on the city council should be filled by a special election and not appointed." And this is 32569, and I kind of defer from reading that much of a specific ones because that's what says we need to have an election. Has nothing to do with form. The other question was, how do we pay the bills? And they say, as part of the material we received, Greg Kupchak, the State Auditor's Office stated that if the council canceled its meeting during the pendency of the special election, he considered it appropriate for the council to approve current and future claims. And he considered it appropriate for the council to approve current and future claims. That is, approving claims arising during the pendency of the special election at the December 12th meeting prior to creation of the vacancies. Because Mr. Kupchak is uniquely suited to provide guidance on the issue, we deferred to his conclusion that the council chooses to cancel its meeting during the special election for lack of agenda items. If we choose to cancel meetings during the special election time for lack of agenda items, we don't have a lack of agenda items, we have bills to pay.
Mayor Lawhead, you were briefed on that prior to last month's meeting, that opinion that was presented by Baird Home?
When was that written?
I was in a meeting with you the day before. The council meet? Well, actually, no. I guess I was not in a meeting with you because I was out of town. But I know a meeting took place and you were briefed. And I'm pretty sure that opinion came in well before the meeting and before I left town. I don't recall exactly. That opinion says that it might constitute a quorum. They defer to the state agencies. And the letter we received from the Attorney General's office in mid-December was in response to a letter that I sent due to inquiries we had from the public regarding the second meeting that took place on December 12th. There were allegations from the public that the meeting was not conducted in accordance with open meeting law. We presented those questions to the Attorney General's office, and they declined to answer those questions and instead said, "No meeting took place," and gave their reasons.
Do you have that?
That is what the letter, that is what the letter says.
Did you have a copy of that?
The letter from the Attorney General's office. It's in your packet.
Okay.
They say they cannot give a specific opinion to us.
Right.
But then they go on to address it.
To give us a specific opinion?
Basically, in order to tell us that they're not going to tell us whether or not open meeting law violations took place because no meeting occurred.
Okay, so what you have, you said somebody complained. That always sets up a red light, maybe if somebody wants to complain, there should be a name attached to it. But if they're complaining about an open meeting law, why are we talking about quorum? Why was the open meeting question? The question was about quorum, was it not?
No.
What was the?
No. There was a question presented regarding quorum due to the fact that there were only three people at the meeting.
But what was the open meeting law? It was broken.
There were questions as to whether or not the executive session was conducted appropriately.
Oh, okay.
There were, I don't remember all the other questions.
Sir, if you can't present those questions, they don't exist as far as I'm concerned.
The complaints were there.
Well.
And so we had to take action by talking to the Attorney General's office about them.
And we say yes, and it is, I am moving forward based on Baird Home. And the reason I picked Baird Home is because, and here's another thing. And we talked about this in that meeting you were talking about when several of us were called in. I don't even remember, but when about two years ago, I remember specifically that Charlie was in Carney, I believe, maybe at a planning and zoning meeting. I believe that's the weekend she spent there with Erin when they were doing some training. And there was a payment due on the Second Street interest on bond. And we were not, we were asked, we got a phone call that said, "I need two people from the board and the mayor, which will constitute a quorum, to come into the office for a special meeting so that we can vote to pay that bond interest." I was called at a little, earlier in the morning, and Mayor Strom said, "I think that Michael's coming. Mr. Keeler will be here, we won't need him." And I said, "Well, I have to come to the office for something anyway." When I got here, Michael had not showed up. And Steve Keeler and I, two members of board, and the mayor constituted a quorum to pay that bill. We did it again when you made the error on the budget, and we had to get five cents or fifty point seven change. We had two people in there and the mayor. We have done that, I think, a third time, I can't remember. And so it's always been that two people on the council and the mayor constituted a quorum for two years until it comes to us having, taking some control and doing what the voters asked us to. And then all of a sudden, and you said at that meeting, when I said, "Why did you change your mind?" You said, "Well, now we decided we made an error." That's not good enough, you said.
And I am not here to discuss whether or not we violated a quorum.
And I'm not here to discuss this. I'm here to conduct a meeting, and I'm going to do it.
I have a statement from the city administrator. She says, "In anticipation of the meeting tonight, I've prepared the following objections. I have chosen not to participate in the meeting this evening due to the unlawful nature of it. I continue to request that you converse with me directly via phone or email or through my appointed counsel. One, I object to any business being conducted in this meeting due to the fact that there's not a proper quorum. Two, I object on the grounds that there are several deficiencies in the notice slash agenda requirements, including but not limited to the fact that the agenda may have been amended less than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. I also advise you, as the city's attorney, not to conduct business at this meeting and just to have a discussion."
Okay. So now, moving forward. Yes. Do you feel like we are to conduct a meeting? Yes?
Yeah.
You have permission of the public to conduct a meeting.
You can say whatever you want, but that's not how this works.
Okay.
And if you want to go to what even your lawyer wrote in, or is quoted as in the Norfolk paper today, they mentioned that there would be no action taken without a quorum. So even your own lawyer doesn't think there's quorum.
We have a quorum. Their lawyer doesn't.
Attorney doesn't say anything different.
We're going to move on, given that chance. I need to finish up the old business. I just want to point out that there are necessary committees that we have to have as a city. And I had asked Charlie for a list all over. I got them, and she also put it in the paper. So there was planning and zoning, there was board adjustments. That's not a necessary, connect stairs, I can read, but we'll talk about that. There's the North Park Committee, which is not an absolute necessity. The Health Board is a necessity. The sewer plant study committee, there's an internal study that is suggested and/or may be required. And I'm in the process of reading the statutes that state on those. The comprehensive planning may be connected to that. So as we move forward, the statute says that in the January meeting that we that we do the reorganization, we can appoint people to committees, and we designate those people who are appointed by the mayor. Okay? So it also says that if we're not quite ready, we can wait a little while. So we're going to wait a while on some of them because we got to make sure we're doing things right. And I am all into that. Okay? But one thing we are going to do tonight, we're going to appoint two people. And that, I guess I'm in the old business. So the progress with wastewater facility and the audit, I need to just mention briefly in the old business. The auditors will be in the office the next two days. Marla's in there with them to facilitate that and to answer questions. I talked with Marla a little bit today. The wastewater, I believe Larry Staubam has been the point person who has talked. I think most of you are aware of the fact that I have not been allowed to enter the offices for approximately six months or more, that I have not been told anything that was going on at the city level. So I am educating myself as we go along. I have, in the 314, ordinance 314 that Charlie quotes often, it says that none of the subordinates of the city, that's always bugged me a little bit, that we're like anybody else's subordinate, but none of them can take orders from anybody, mayor or council, without going through her. It does not say anywhere in that that they can't talk to me, and yet I can't talk to them without them saying, "Charlie won't let me talk to you." So let's get the truth out there. I may be flying a little bit low right now, but we will get going. And I may not know all the statutes, but I am prepared this time to appoint a new lawyer to our city because the state statute says we appoint every year, and I get to do that. So I am appointing a gentleman named James McNally. His office is in Neely, and his office is known as a expert on municipal, small city law. And that's all they do is represent small towns. I have asked him to be here tonight, and I don't know whether to introduce him before or after the vote. Mr. McNally, would you stand up and let people see him?
Sure.
Mr. James McNally, who I am appointing for the city lawyer. I'm not sure, would you like to say something before we take the vote?
Yeah, I would. Yeah, okay. I think you should know a little bit about me before you appoint me as city attorney. It's kind of like coming home because I'm actually born in Manali. And my wife and I were married in Manali. And I was in Manali, but seventy years ago, there was transferred to the Bloomfield office. Raised in Bloomfield, still in Bloomfield, until senior year. And I was still in Neely. So I've been practicing law in Neely for the last 54 years. And we do specialize in municipal law. Except we do other work too. I'm a county attorney, and we've been county for 50 years.
I'm sorry, sir.
We do other work, but we spend most of our time representing cities in cities we represent. We have a company called Municipal Code Services, which we advise as municipal ordinances. We advise about 160 towns in Nebraska, including Crofton several years ago. And we are city attorney for a number of villages and cities in the state of Nebraska. We spend a lot of time representing municipal law. We have worked extensively with the Baird Home law firm during the last 55 years. We've worked extensively with the couple of law firms in Norfolk, in the state of Norfolk. I have visited with the mayor by phone and email in the discussion of the legal status of the board and city council. And I agree with Baird Home because they are experts in municipal law. Have been experts for many, many, many years. The Attorney General's letter is not an opinion. The Attorney General deals basically with criminal law and legislation for the legislature. They also give advice through various legal entities of the state. But they're certainly not experts in municipal law. We can talk about that, which is the law, I'm talking about Baird Home. Baird Home says that these two members of the city council constitute a quorum, and I agree with them. It's a full direct. So that's why I suggested that they tend to conduct business tonight. However, I would recommend you not make the appointment tonight because it's not on the agenda. If you have a special meeting, then you should put on the agenda specifically appointment of.
Okay. Well, I have the appointment, discussion of appointment positions to be filled, just to start. Okay, that's fine.
I think we're a little more specific than that.
Okay, we can do that.
But anyhow, I'm glad to be here and glad to introduce myself. If the mayor wants to appoint me and tell you anything, I'm glad to do it. But that's a hard decision unfortunately.
Thank you. And I think, Ken, you made that remark about, you know, that my own attorney, that attorney was hired, if you were here at the December meeting, that attorney was hired to look at the contract that we have with the Hendrixes. And the reason we decided, if that, you said earlier that was a question. The reason we decided to do that, and we said that at the meeting, was because the Hendrixes had asked for a buyout. We didn't feel like we should be, as he just said, that's what we asked for as council.
Okay, well, I would just like, and I've got no problem with that. I would just, I would just like.
But he did not know that this had come out.
Since you officially went into executive session and came out, made an announcement, and adjourned the meeting, there were no specific details on what was being charged by that law firm, if there was any cap, how long it was going to go on, what the exact purposes. At least we got exact purposes, and I still would like answers to those other questions too. What funds are you taking?
Yeah, that was, actually, there was a letter sent to me, as the mayor sent to the office, and they opened it, although it's addressed to me and that had the details. $1.80 an hour in mileage if they, if she needs to.
Okay, what for a cap?
There is no cap.
So they can charge every month exactly what they want?
No, what they earn.
Right.
So are you saying that, are you telling us that four years, can you keep working? And not charge us anything?
What I'm saying is usually there is some sort of.
There wasn't when we hired Baird Homes for the Sharon Street, sir. And we didn't even know what they were.
There normally is some sort of cap.
They didn't even tell us what they were charging, and there was no cap.
That wasn't part of my question.
I'm just explaining to you that that's the history.
And the other part of my question is, is what funds are you paying those out of?
Well, I'm going to suggest to you that those would probably be paid out of general funds because it's a general contract kind of thing. But I would have to be more, talk more with Eddie, who is our expert on the funds. And again, our.
That's fine, I just want this.
Yeah, Baird Home, they charged in, they charged out of the Sharon Street funds, which left us with no money to pay our.
That's not what we're talking about. Could you stay on the subject, please?
No, because you want to know about paying, where we're going to pay them from and how we're going to do it.
Then talk about what this is about.
Oh, well, okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you. So we will not make that appointment, and at the same time, then we'll discuss another appointment. And that is to have Kathy Nor be our city clerk. And I have asked Marla if she would train whoever we chose. She said yes. And Marla's already given notice that she's leaving, so we need to fill that vacancy immediately. Now, I will ask advice here, if we can, Mr. McNally. I would like to set a meeting for next Monday for one specific reason, and that is because we have some of that pesky bond interest due. And I am told that bond interest that is late creates more problems than maybe some other bills. And if we have a meeting on Monday night and approve those bills, we can get that bond money paid in time. So it's not late. We could in fact do our appointment. We could, in fact, do our appointments on that and have it on the agenda. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, should be city clerk treasurer, so that treasurer can sign the warrants for the city.
Is, now, I understood that we have separate treasurer than the clerk, is that not true?
Well, depends on what yours says. Sometimes combine the guy that said clerk treasurer, something like that.
We'll explore that then, because I'm looking for treasurer also, yeah. Because that's tied in with, um, with the Hendrix contracts and we don't know what's happening now.
Yes, you, you really need to make a bond payment because it affects your credit rating if you don't make them on time.
Absolutely. And we've got a lot of, of things going on there, we're gonna have to have a lot of more So, in the new section then, um, the reorganized committees and expectations of activities, I just want everybody to know that we're gonna use the ones that we have to, but I would like to set up some committees, like, that would be specific to streets, specific to wastewater, specific to, and then other things and that, in that infrastructure, and then bring those together, um, with our, um, planning and zoning and our, um, what's the other one that we, that she named, the, um, the, 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 the study, the internal study committee that helps put the money out to all of those. We want to specifically pay attention to where that sales tax money is going because that was part of the, um, language in that, what the, that what the town voted for. So we need to know specifically where that's going. There is a health board that is, has to be in place. Charlie has, Jamie Miller and Pat Smith, in fact, our ordinance says that it's the mayor, the chairman of the board, um, the chief of police, and a health person. So there needs to be four on that board. Uh, Aaron Dennis has resigned, we need to find someone to fill that. Uh, and I've talked to a couple, three people that are thinking about it. The, um, invoice list, as I said, that expectation is if we can have a meeting Monday night, um, we need to get the, the invoice list and I'm not sure Marla's willing to do that. So that kind of depends on what her orders are. So we've got a hurdle there. Um, is there any other business that anybody wants to? Oh, I know one that's not on the agenda, Ed Smith, or, yes, Ed Kleinsmith called me today, said that, uh, Mr. Hendrix had filled out, um, paperwork for a liquor license. And when I got here, I asked Mr. Hendrix, he said he's got it all ready to go. And, um, if I want to sign it and have it approved in March, or they can drink lemonade, I think is what he said. I'm not signing it if it's not voted on, I'm sorry. My signature will not go on anything that doesn't pass the per-vote council. We can do that Monday. And I talked to Mr. Kleinsmith about it, he said that should give him plenty of time that actually it was Mr. Hendrix that takes care of that, so. The other thing is, there's a warrant, um, here to Blue Cross New Shield that they have asked me to sign. They say this is pre-approved, that we did it at the last meeting. Why it wasn't signed, I am not sure. It wasn't due, wasn't done, whatever. I will look at this carefully. I have no desire to put my name on anything that's not approved. And, um, by the way, I didn't blend any detail, but all of this is there and all of, if it's there, and if it's not there, I have it. But the reference to going by what the auditors said, the auditors did not say that we should pre-approve and, or that we should pre-approve all the way to December, or Jan, or to March, excuse me. They said, as far as they knew, the only thing you could pay was what was already due or due in the past, not what's in the future. And I, I will find that at some point if anybody wants to see it. We were given two choices. One was to approve only Decembers and move on, um, as I remember, and the other one was to approve everything through March and, and back out and have no meetings and let, um, Charlie pay the bills and run the city. And I opted not to do that. So now you know the truth. If there's no more business, we're gonna vote to adjourn. We will have, we did, we voted to open, no, we never opened, we never opened. Okay, I'm gonna make errors. So, we had a meeting. Uh, sir, do we have to bother with, do we have to?
You need public notice, of course, and if you want to have a meeting Monday night, if somebody takes a motion, have a special meeting Monday night at six thirty, and somebody should second that motion, you should both vote on it because as according to Barrett Home, this is a legally constituted forum meeting.
Thank you.
And you can do that.
Are we in trouble because we didn't open it? Are we supposed to open it?
And as far as that goes, if, if that's true, and that's the course you're going to take, there's no reason to pre-pay anything, just have regular meetings, have regular meetings nights, approve the bills and everything else, it's on the agenda on those nights and you don't have to worry about prepayments, just anything, we'll put money back.
Right, okay, that's what I want to do.
You did open the meeting.
I, I called for a roll call, but I don't think I-
Oh, you called. You said now?
I did, because we voted.
You have the public notice, it's three minutes late.
Yep.
Call the meeting board at six thirty-three, the knowledge public notice at six-
And I had a vote because I called for Pam, Larry and me and we, we opened the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
We need a motion.
We need a motion. I'm sorry that I'm not very good at this, I didn't attend for H.R.F.A.
I'll make a motion for a special meeting, Monday, January, wait, this is big kids.
Fourteenth, I think.
Fourteenth, at six thirty.
I object for that of the forum.
So noted? Uh, I do want, before we do this, I do want to make one statement because Kim mentioned that our old lawyer had said we didn't have a forum. That would have been Kathy Rocky, and she told me that that reporter, um, whose name is Gunther, so I have a sneaking suspicion he might be from around here, but anyway, that he had asked for a statement, she was asking, she was not giving him a statement, he even said that in the, uh, deal. But, so I kind of glanced at that and I didn't read it closely. But I also had made the remark, because I was going on Daniel's advice, but I went further and I got different advice and I changed my mind and we all have that right.
And I talked to Kathy Rocky this afternoon and she's on the same page that I am before.
Yep. So, you know, that's, that's what the law does, it moves forward. So, um, we have a motion on the floor and a second by Larry and, um, I'll call for a vote then from Larry.
Yes.
And Pam?
Yes.
Now, do I need to vote on these?
No.
Okay. So we will set the meeting for six thirty, January fourteenth.
Need a motion to adjourn.
And we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Larry. Second.
Second.
Second by Pam to adjourn and a vote. Pam?
Yes.
And Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.